I'd like to go ahead and call to order this regular city council meeting for Monday, July 11th. We could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please? Lanian?
Present.
Pratt? Ballinger? Rhines?
Present.
Gilroy? Present. Hanson?
Present.
We have two absences for this evening. We have Councilman Ballinger and Councilman Pratt. I would entertain a motion to excuse their absence.
Make a motion to excuse.
All right, thank you. Do I have support? All right, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we have approval of our agenda for this evening. I do see that we have a boards and commission application, so we would want to add that on as action item C. So with that being said, yes. Tim.
Under the rules of the city council, the agenda is set by 12 o'clock on Thursday preceding the meeting, and may only be, new business can only be considered when placed on air on the approval of five or more members of council.
Oh, all right. So we will table this then.
I would like to quite out disclose that you do have a provision that the rules of city council may be suspended for a specified portion of a meeting by a majority of the members present.
Oh, and there's a majority of the members present.
I would make a motion to suspend the rules for this portion of the meeting.
Thank you so much, Drives.
Second.
Thank you. Holly, do you need to call a roll for this, please? Please call the roll. Pratt? Or, sorry. Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy? Yes. Hanson?
Yes.
Lanian?
Yes.
All right, thank you for that. Now, I'd like to ask for approval of the agenda, and I do see that we have an application for board commission seat, so that would be added as action item 8C. If someone could make that motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Support.
All right. All those in favor of the agenda amended as submitted? Aye?
Aye.
Dan? Or do we need a roll call?
She, yeah, she's.
Roll call, Holly, roll call. Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy? Yes. Hanson?
Yes.
Lanian? All right. Moving along, we have our audience participation. If we have anybody in the audience that would like to come forward at this time. All right, we'll keep moving right along then. We have our council meeting minutes of June 27th, 2022. I'm looking for approval unless there were any changes noted.
I make me approve. Meeting for the meeting minutes for June 27th.
All right, thank you. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you both. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Now we have our accounts payable and...
I had a very quick chance to review the accounts payable for us after conferring with the city manager, and so to start, I would like to make a motion to approve the disbursements of check 75665 through 75715 and ACH 274A and 275A for a total amount of eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and four dollars and six cents.
Councilman Lanian, thank you so much for doing that for us. Do I have a second support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Rhines. If there's no other questions for accounts payable, Holly, will you call the roll? Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy? Yes. Lanian?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Fantastic. Moving along to our action items, we have three action items on our agenda for this evening. The first is a council vacancy application extension. So we have an open seat here at our table. A council member had stepped down. Holly has put together a memo for us, so Holly, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to you, please. We have not received any applications until today, but technically we do need to extend it to keep the deadline and everything rolling. So if we can extend it to the next meeting and so on, we can get that application to you at the next meeting, so you guys can consider it. All right, okay. With that being said, does anybody have any questions regarding this? Because we do know that this is a seat that will just go until the general election in November. If this person were to choose to want to run, they would need to start soliciting their petition immediately because the deadline for ballot language is what? Holly? July 26th. July 26th. So this could be a person to fill that seat. They may not choose to run in November, so I want everybody to be well aware of that.
What is the president's requirement?
Two years. President. Two years.
Are the other boards around this thing right now?
Yeah.
It depends on the board.
It depends on the board. We do have a couple of boards where we will allow an outside member from the city to serve on a board, like Parks and Rec. DDA has to be businesses, but we do have two seats available for residents that live within the DDA district. So there are some different caveats to the board, the boards. For this particular one, Mr. Forrest has served previously, but we'll get to that with our, with our next, with our connection.
But you have to live two years?
You have to be a city resident for two years, yes. And an elector of the city. And an elector of the city, meaning they have to be registered to vote. Yes, so there's the two stipulations. So if we don't have any other questions or discussion regarding the council vacancy application extension, I'm looking for that motion.
Is anybody, is anybody hearing you, or anybody that you know, is anybody?
We did receive an application, Holly mentioned that, so we do have one that would be in our next board packet for us to, we'd want them to come in, introduce themselves in addition to their application. We've done that previously. You were able to do that, so yeah, so we would want that.
And extending this until our next board meeting allows, we have that one application, so they would obviously be in.
Yes, and the next council packet.
Gives an opportunity if anyone else wants to, we'll also.
So any other questions or discussion? All right, I'm looking for that motion.
I make a motion to extend the acceptance of applications for the city council vacancy until July 20th.
Twenty-fifth? Twenty? Oh, twenty, oh, twentieth, oh.
Crazy weather.
Sorry.
When's the next time we meet?
That's the, so that's when the application will be due, like it's not up on the agenda yet.
Time to put it on the agenda.
So that's.
Until July 25th.
Yes.
Until July 20th, July 20th at 5:00 p.m.
And the rest of it.
Yes.
And the rest of it.
And the rest interview is taking place on 25th, regular city council meeting. Final decision made August 8th, council meeting.
All right, thank you, Terry, I appreciate that. Do I have support for this motion? Thank you, Dan. If there's no other discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please? Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy? Yes. Lanian?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
All right. Moving along, we've got our MML fund trustee election. We do have a memo in here regarding that. John, I'll go ahead and turn it over. We've got a couple of council members that may not be familiar with this.
Sure, thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. So we belong to the Michigan Municipal League for Risk Managed Insurance, and in this case, this is for the Workers Compensation Fund. And so there is a board of directors for that, and there's an elective process that goes to all the member organizations, and in this case, I guess it's relatively simple. There's just one person that's on the ballot, and his bio is there. I don't know if that gentleman seems very qualified, been involved for a long time. So don't really have anything else, other than if council so desires, they would elect Mr. Lee Kilborn, an incumbent, and he is the mayor of the city of Auburn, to the Michigan Municipal League Workers Compensation Fund.
I've had the opportunity to meet Mayor Kilborn a couple of different times at the mayor workshop each summer, and he's, he's good, so.
So Holly would cast the vote for all of us if you say do it that way? This is the ballot, you do the end.
Yep. So I am looking for that motion.
I would make a motion that we cast our ballot for Michigan Municipal League Workers Compensation Fund, or what is it?
Trustee.
Trustee as Lee Kilborn.
Thank you so much. Do I have support? Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Gilroy? Yes. Lanian?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
All right, our last agenda item is our board and commissions application from Kathleen DeForest for a seat with board of review. She has served the city in other capacities on several other boards, namely TIPA, 1A, 2A, and EDC, so, yes, Holly? Her term would expire 1/1/23. And it's very short, but it is, that's where we have to start. All right, so I'm looking for that motion.
I'd like to go.
What does the board review, what does it do? What's the?
Board of review is two times a year where residents that are taxpayers can bring their tax bill forward. The board of review is made up of three individuals, Holly. So if you're a taxpayer and you feel that maybe it's not quite in alignment, you've received an increase, you can go in front of the board of review, you can ask them to review that, you could do comparables to your home as far as property value.
So it's a tax.
Yep, so, and it means twice a year, March and October? I think July. March, March, July, okay. That's why we're invested.
You know, remember how we've talked about businesses in the city that have gone before the tax tribunal?
For the state of Michigan.
For the state of Michigan. The board of review is the equivalent for residents.
For residents, yes. I've actually done it. When we first, when I have, I did it when we first moved in, and I was successful. So they're, they're a great group of people. Again, they only meet twice a year. Holly publishes a notice for all residents that have property tax, that if they would like to come and dispute it, they, they can.
Can that board explain to me the state equalized value and how that's derived? I've read your email that you sent to me on that, and, and I'm a numbers guy, I mean, I, you know, but it is, it's okay to me.
Right, yes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So the people on this board know how that thing works.
But, but.
Yes, go ahead.
Be mindful that the state sets equalized.
Yes.
The other thing is the board of review is really the first step for anybody that would have a contested tax case, and if you didn't get satisfaction from the board of review, your appeal isn't to this body. It's one of my rare cases that it's not, it goes to the state tax tribunal. And that's to keep elected officials out of the hearing taxation cases.
Correct.
Makes sense.
Tim, will you let us?
That's, the board of review is a prerequisite for a residential property owner to further appeal to the tax tribunal. Commercial, I don't believe necessarily has to go to the board of review.
Right.
They can.
They can.
Yeah. All right, so no problem. So Dan, did you make that motion, or no, you were in the middle of it?
I did.
Brandon did?
I'll make a motion to appoint Kathleen DeForest to the board review for term ending 1/1/23.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Second.
Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Lanian?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy? Yes. All right, moving along, that ends our action items. We're moving on to our discussion items, and that's going to be our road diet schedule, and we've got a memo in here from Mr. Hanifin, so I'm going to turn that over to him.
Thank you, members of council, Mayor Gilroy. At the conclusion of our work session last time, we discussed what the actual schedule might look like, and this is as pretty close as it could or will be. We already went to schools back in session, traffic counts, both on M43 Grand River and Putnam. The SICROL presentation, that's where those traffic counts are put into the traffic stimulation model. You've never seen one, it's actually pretty cool. You know, you don't want to look at it for hours, because there's a lot of dots going in at high speed, but it is pretty cool, and it gives you an idea of, there's a lot of what ifs that can be run in the model, if you do this, but not that, what does the traffic look like?
Yep.
So it's pretty cool. And then we would have a work session with MDOT and talk about their process, because we have, we will work with them on M43. I've had some preliminary discussions with MDOT. They're certainly welcome and amenable to come out and be with us, so as long as schedules match up, they'll do that in November. And then really December and January would be the design phase, and that would be for M43 and for Putnam Street. And then we would have as many as two, we can have as many really as council desires, public information sessions, and then we'll start a, a public information campaign, not just internally with our boards and commissions, although all of our meetings are public, but also with, with our Facebook page and all the traditional media. Under my report, I'll talk a little bit later about an interview I did with Fox 47, which proves I have a face for radio, but at any rate, if they came out for that, I'm sure they come out for more of our things. So we want to make sure that the information is broadcast, and then, you know, pending a favorable resolve in this council moving forward, then we would start in May.
Sounds good.
That would be subjecting apparently in, in MDOT with their schedule, so.
All right, questions for Mr. Hanifin, Dan?
I have a question. I believe when we first started the road diet process pre-COVID, we had had a traffic count, and I know we saw the SICROL presentation. I'd be curious, if it all lines up almost exactly the same, it doesn't matter, but I'd be curious if there were any big outliers from when we did that a few years ago to now?
Right.
Like if there's an increase in traffic, or if it's dropped way off, if we could have a.
Pull those numbers.
Yeah, and actually, we, we had, the latest traffic counts for, for Grand River and 43 in the city were during, were in 2020. And so, so we know those, you know, that's an anomaly, because they actually did. I mean, we were, I think, in the, in the low teens, I think, the first time around 2018, and they were, they were sub 10,000 in 2020. We, we know that's not correct, because, well, it was correct, it just, we just know that that was called, and there's a lot less people driving. And frankly, that, I would expect them to be a little bit less than 2018, just because a lot of, a lot of people's life patterns have shifted, and not everybody drives every day.
Right.
And that's the good thing about the traffic counts, they're not just, I mean, you can, they won't be out there for weeks at a time, but they won't be just, you know, there's different traffic patterns even Monday to Tuesday.
Right.
So, and Fridays, so.
Yep.
But yes, we will definitely have that as part of the analysis.
Excellent. I like it because it's an aggressive schedule, and honestly, this won't be weather dependent, so we can just keep it moving forward. So I'm, I'm happy with that. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm the new guy and all that, so what's the, apparently this has been working for years. What's the council's sort of intuitive take on, how are people going to react to this? Is it going to be 80/20, where 80% are in favor, then 20% are against? Is it going to be 95 and 5, with the 5% are really adamant?
Aye.
Or is it going to be 50/50, and maybe we do it, maybe we don't?
So I think you will, if you're, if you're a social media follower, like I think most of us are here at the table, I think this is something that has, has been very long in the waiting, and it's something that will definitely improve our flow downtown. If you've read any of the social, and we all know that social media is, is what really kind of moves the needle sometimes, but there's a lot of chatter about the four corners. If you were to ask our retired chief, Bob Young, and our current chief, Jim Wolfe, what is their biggest problem spot, it's the downtown four corners. So this is something that, and this is even two city managers prior to John. This is back when Alan Dolly was here, we started talking about this, and I'm, I'm sure before I even got on council in 2015. So it is something that is.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think the community will be happy.
What's going to be the public reaction to this? What's, what's your expected public, what do you think public is going to do?
So previously, when we talked about this, it, it took a long time to even get a meeting with MDOT. Bob Young had spent probably two years trying to get a meeting with MDOT, and he took this to the point where he, he was so worried about that intersection, he personally, in his, he would wear a yellow uniform for high visibility, he would not cross the street down there as a pedestrian. As the police chief, he would jaywalk, because he was so worried about people getting hit down there. And he tried for two years before we could finally get a meeting with MDOT to discuss the, the road diet. And at the time, we were trying to figure out, would it be a, a new stoplight? And, and MDOT said no. When we finally got the meeting, it was road diet. And the concern at that point in time was, would we lose parking on South Putnam? And since then, we've done the, we revamped that parking lot, the DDA parking lot behind the hardware and the bistro and all that, and we've added parking spaces. So while we may lose some of that street level parking right there, hopefully, it won't be as dramatic of an impact, because we added those spaces being in that parking lot.
Well, and we've also, John mentioned last council meeting too, that, you know, there is the ability to approach Huntington Bank and see if they would be amenable to having parking for downtown businesses during daytime hours. So I, I, I would have, my gut feeling would say this is going to be very well received. It's going to definitely take the education portion of it, though. We've got to be very consistent with the message that we put out, that this is something that we wanted to do, we now have the opportunity to do it, it is going to be a safer intersection because of it, and, you know, and it all starts with that, is really, you know, the...
So again, are we talking 80/20 or 95?
I think the first six months, I think your first six months, there's going to be a shock.
Yeah, there's going to be a shock.
I think your first six months, people are going to go, oh, I don't like it.
Six months after we've done it?
Yes, or is it new? Anything, anything new that where you're...
I want these meetings, these coming up meetings, what do you think it's going to be?
It depends, I mean, I'm going to be quite honest, it, you, what you're looking at right now, I would like everybody to prove me wrong, that this gallery would be full of people coming to town hall meetings. And John, what do you think?
So I'll just, I don't say this very often, but this is what you get paid a big bucks for, is, is to balance, and me too, is to balance those, those community needs, those critical community needs.
Yes.
And I'll tell you, since I started here in February, the A number one issue that folks have come to me about, and it's, it's residents, it's business people, it's people on our various boards and commissions, it's the four corners and the condition there, and we're going to do our very best to like minimize any, any parking impacts, because really, as I peel this issue through, and all of you have lived with it a lot longer than I have, that's the, that's quote unquote, the only downside, other than the change, and change is always, you know.
Change is hard.
Change, but it's the, it's the perceived loss of parking on, on South Putnam. And that's the balance act between enhanced pedestrian safety forever and five parking spots.
You know, and I mean, you know, to think about it this way, too, we are doing something to make a significant change down in our, in our four corners. We know that we will have police presence down there once, you know, the, the lines have been painted, if we get a left-hand turn signal light, you know, Jim is going to put time and effort into making sure that that's still safe, and, you know, there may be some educational moments that, that happen in the community, but as long as we are consistent with our message to the community, to our downtown businesses, I think that this will be very well received.
It seems like a really good idea. It doesn't seem like something that's hard to sell.
No, but...
Maybe, maybe I'm thinking that way, because I just don't have any experience with this thing.
I don't think it's going to be hard to sell, but I think that what is, what he's trying to say is that it's going to be different. So think of it right now, when you're driving down Putnam, everyone, including people who should know better, think that it's too lane, right? And so we're going to cut that out, and people are going to be upset at it first, but until we don't have motorcycle access where people are getting cream, where we aren't having pedestrians almost hit, I mean, that's when people are going to finally wake up and say like, oh, this is actually a good thing. So yes, it'll be frustrating, but it seems like a good beginning.
But it, but it, you know, it's continuous improvement for our downtown area, it's a educational process, and if, everybody's on a learning curve, and the more that people go through that intersection, it'll just become, it'll just become the normal for them.
Okay. Does anybody want us to park on North Putnam?
We don't know that. Yeah, there's no parking on North Putnam.
There's no parking anyway, okay.
No, there's no parking any on there, so.
I, I missed the, the work session at the previous city council meeting. So is the, is there a possibility of a left-hand turn signal? Because previously, we had talked about just pavement parking.
Yep, no, we did talk about that.
Most, most of council had said that they would like a left-hand turn signal.
We would like it, you know, we know it's big bucks, but we also know that it's M43, and hopefully, you know, it won't come completely out of our pocket, but...
How much is this MDOT, because it's M43, how much is us?
Previously, we've been told, and I don't know if this could have changed it, that it was all us if we wanted that.
So we're talking $20,000, $120,000?
I think it's too soon to tell.
Couple of questions there, and this is, this is great, and it's a great, this is why it's a discussion topic again. So the, typically, MDOT will participate in, they, they've had a policy change too since 2018, and there's a lot more of these, and we talked a little bit about that at the work session about all the, you know, a lot of them metro Detroit, there's been a lot of those state highways, that, that, there are highways much like M43 Grand River that have undergone road diets, and MDOT participated in that. It's anything beyond the paint, so the signal, changing signals, we may get them to participate in adding, you know, the, the green arrow at the left turn, but if we want to change something from strings across to masked arms, which are more visually appealing, and I did a project like this in my last community, to make that change, it was about 60 grand. But again, to sum total this project, I mean, if, if we're not looking at any cross islands in this initial phase, or at all, you're probably looking at magnitude, I'll say 100 to 120,000. But again, it's back to that, that community balance of...
Yes, safety.
The, the dollar for dollar impact, you know, spending that money for that project to me is...
How much would the MDOT portion be if ours is 100,000? Do we, do we, do we care?
I mean, we certainly care, I mean, we want them to, it is a state highway, and we want them to pay their fair share.
Fair share, yep.
And that's what they, they, you know, again, they're having a policy change over time. They'll pay for a portion of it, but when you go anything beyond, you know, anything beyond the, you're basically paying for the, the wheels and the keys and the windshield wipers on the car. They'll help pay for the car, but you're going to pay for everything else.
And I think, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but we will start seeing some more solid information as far as numbers like that.
Oh, yeah.
When we get closer to, to December.
Absolutely.
Because that's the design base, the sign plan. Sure.
Because on the one hand, you say, oh, it's just paint, but then you say, oh, it's $100,000 of paint, and it's a, so.
I, I think it's, it's, that's a, that's a much smaller number than what I was hearing three and a half years ago.
Yes.
I mean, we were hearing a, upward, closer, you, you were hearing, I thought I had heard a close to a million floated for a stoplight, so if we're talking $100,000 for a, for a left turn light, I'm...
Yeah. Yep, and like John said, that's super important. I...
I just have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Is it all paint, or is there any improvements made with the?
I, I don't know, is there been conceptual drawings out there, something like that? I've never...
We had some at the work session last council meeting, and they were truly conceptual. Several years ago, we had kind of scenarios when we had the, the SICROL presentation and some conceptuals, but really, we're talking about shifting lanes, creating east and westbound with a, a middle turn lane, go left, and then on that north and south, you know, the same thing. On North Putnam, there's no parking on that side, on South Putnam there is, and so there would be some elimination of, of those parking spaces, but no major construction to surface.
Yeah, that's what...
But it's, it's going to be the lining and, and all of that, probably some enhancements with our pedestrian crosswalks, possibly, and...
Do you call those islands, or what's the name of the thing in the middle of the road that was an island, pedestrian island or something?
Yeah.
Pedestrian island.
We're not, we're not thinking of that, though.
Not, we're going to go through the design phase first, I mean, I don't, the most, I guess for me, the most important thing is the, you know, step by step, let's get the traffic counts, get the model, you know, work with MDOT to see what their participation level would be.
Yep.
Because, again, after, you can always add those other things in future phases.
And John, it might not even, it might be a good idea, if we could get an MDOT representative in here.
Oh, yeah.
To speak to it, that would be very helpful. We've not had an MDOT representative previously when we talked about this, so getting that person in here to, to add more information, knowledge would be great.
Especially if one of the problems historically is that MDOT wouldn't meet with us for two years.
It was, I just, I think, I think times have changed, I think safety is a bigger concern moving forward, and, and I think, you know, MDOT's gone through their growing pains too, you know? So fantastic discussion, thank you so much for the schedule, John, and, you know, if we need to, we could keep this as a standing discussion item.
Sure.
Moving forward, and that way you'll be able to give updates for it, that would be fantastic. Moving along on our agenda for correspondence received, we do not have any, we have our department head reports, so John, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Thank you. And Friday was the last call for treasure applications, and I'm happy to announce we did get some, some great candidates, so we're going to start interviewing for those, and hopefully, we'll, pending a, a good candidate and, you know, backgrounds, that we would have someone to present to all of you at the first meeting in August, so that's moving forward. We had our kickoff meeting this morning for the rate study, we met with Baker Tilly this morning, and then that went really well. We talked about that timeline before. The DDA does meet next week, that's the only meeting scheduled. TIPA to be is not going to meet, really, the, you know, the, the big issue there is the ICE house, and we're just not ready to have an amended purchase agreement for that, so we'll, we'll take that up in August. And then, last week, I was, you know, I don't know, fortunate or unfortunate depending on, but always happy to, to share the good news, I got Earl Wolf, actually, my good friend Earl Wolf, set me up and had me go out and do an interview with Fox 47, so there's a nice story, it's probably on the website about the kayak launch, and, you know, as you can imagine, it's, it's generated some questions from folks, and just, you know, as part of helping spread the word. Really, the kayak launch, it's, it's a great, you know, another note, I guess, on the Red Cedar as a river trail, but there's this larger regional effort that, that we're very much a part of, and there's some folks that are in town, including Earl and John Goleman, who's just outside of town, that are working with the various fraternity clubs in the area, and it's really a multi-jurisdictional effort with Michigan State, City of East Lansing, Worthington Township, Williams Town Township, let's see, Williams then to, to work on making sure that the Red Cedar is cleared, and that there's a, there's an annual maintenance budget for that, and, and so we've been working with the Inglewood County, Inglewood County as well, Inglewood County, Inglewood County Parks, but we've been working with also the Inglewood County Drain Commission to get their assistance with keeping the, the Red Cedar open, and, and that's really the, kind of the next, next level. Williams Town Township got a grant not too long ago.
Yes.
To do some clearing, and I think it's been a couple of years, and it's the nature of the, the, the... To do some clearing, and I think it's been a couple of years, and it's the nature of the, the, the Red Cedar that there's, there's almost always going to be trees and trees clear. So that'll help. So as our project is wrapping up, we're still looking at that larger regional effort. So someone could put a kayak in at McCormick, and they could go all the way up to Dean's Road Bridge and come back, and then ultimately get all the way get out to west of Kansas, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's been nice. And so last summer was when they did the big initial cleanout of the river. And that's the thing, once you do the big initial cleanout, that maintenance schedule becomes, you know, pretty easy. They, they took some huge snacks out of that river, you know, starting here, right behind the northwest corner of town. And I believe they got all the way down behind Beckham, to the dam. Like, I don't know if they got farther, did they go as far as township?
They went, they went as far as the Township Park on Grand River.
Yeah, so, that's a huge undertaking.
I mean, there is, as tall as I am, if you walk the, the trails out of the Township Park and you get along the river, there's a large landing that you can walk down to, and there's a pile of logs down there that's probably six foot tall.
Oh, sure.
And.
Yeah.
Wider than this room that they pulled out of the river just from in region over there.
Yeah.
And the year prior to that, Lock Township had gotten, I don't know if they got a grant or somehow they, they got some money and they did east further up. So there, there's been, for the last few years, this substantial effort made to try and clear the Red Cedar.
And we know nature happens. This, this does not mean that trees are going to quit falling. They will, just because of erosion of the riverbank and everything. But this was, again, just a, a huge thing to have happen so that we can have a nice, you know, passable river and not have the portage so much when kayakers or, or canoeers are going down it, so.
Good question. How much money are we talking about and who funds this sort of thing? So we, again, is this $10,000 declared on the Chum River?
So it was actually, it was a joint grant that Wanda Boone Chris from the Williams Township had submitted for Ingham County to come through and clear the river. I can't, I can't remember the.
Drain commission.
Drain commission. And I can't remember what the price tag was on it, but it was grant funded. So they came out and did it. We did not have to put any dollars into that pot.
Ingham County.
Ingham County.
To whom we give large amounts of money.
Sure, yes, yes. So. Yes, Terry.
That's the trail, trails and parks millis.
Yes.
That all county property owners pay into.
Yes.
And since its inception, the county has awarded millions in, in grant funding for trails and parks, including the Blue Water Trail.
Yes.
So a water trail is what Williams Township got. And Williams did finally get.
Yeah, a portion of it. Nice to be involved, yeah.
I, I've hiked a lot of the trails next to the Red Cedar and the Grand River, so they're beautiful, they're great, downtown Lansing and all that. The idea that we could have something like that here is, that's really attractive.
The city of Lansing has got a lot of those grants.
Of the money, yeah, yeah. That's, yeah, and, 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 you know, because it is Ingham County, it's a capital C. And just historically, you know, a lot of money does go into that center portion. But we have finally seen some out here, and that's a good thing, so.
That's where it came from.
Yeah.
Just like, just a kind of a final remark, just because that was, sort of making the social media rounds, it's like what, what happens. You know, you can't even kayak down there, but the, this, this effort is, the idea is that the, the rotary clubs and those various political jurisdictions would, would adopt a segment of the river.
Yep.
And then that they would either do the work they can themselves, or they would help fundraise, and then the, and then various political government entities could, could apply for grants if they're, if need be, so.
It's a good thing.
Everybody sees the value of it. It's really, you know, reminds me a lot of the, the, the border-to-border trail effort when I was in Washington County, very much the same thing where, oh, you can't possibly do that, there's no way you can do it. It's too, it's too, it's too long. Well, the good news here is the river's already built, it's just maintaining it now.
Yeah. Well, and if you even go back historically for the city of Williamston, and this is going extremely far back, this actually used to be a blue ribbon trout stream.
Red cedar?
Red cedar. So preserving the river is a huge thing. And, and I think that, you know, what's happened is, you know, fantastic. And like Tim just said, it's a blue water trail. You don't necessarily have to have a walking trail. You can, you know, take the, you've got the water trail, you can go down the river. All right, we have our report from Livingston County, from the Building and Safety Engineering Department. There's still so much happening here in the city, and I'm so glad to see it. Lots of projects that are happening residentially. So I just, I'm always eager to see who's doing what, and everybody's still very active with that. If you have any questions, you can certainly contact John, and then John can get those answered from Livingston County. But it's nice to see that we still have a lot going on.
As the new guy, every time I come to a city council, there's a whole raft of things at hand here with building permits. Are you saying that that's not common or has not been common for the last five, six, eight years?
I will say that since we were able to change and start utilizing the services of Livingston County, we know what's happening. We would get reports from AGS.
We didn't know.
No, no, we would get reports from AGS Building Department, who, we contracted with them. I just think it's been an improvement, and it was something that we were looking for.
It's much more comprehensive, what you get from Livingston County than what we got from AGS.
Yes.
AGS was just a, it was a list of the addresses where there was something going on. Whereas with Livingston County, you have a much more comprehensive.
Yes, yes, yep. So continuous improvement. So again, if you have questions regarding anything in particular in this report, you can contact John, and he will get an answer for you. I'll go quickly around the table for committee subcommittee reports. Has anybody had any meetings? You were very busy with Jubilee, and I just want to say thank you so much. You were missed at council meeting, but I know you were, number one, you were taking a break, but you were also celebrating your birthday, so happy belated birthday to you on that. But Jubilee was fantastic, and so hats off to you and the whole entire committee.
I second that.
Great. But any meetings that anybody has attended?
Yeah, so we had, we had planning the day after our last council, where we had several in for us about a vacant property that's down on Grand River. Individual who bought it wants to turn it into another used car dealership. But a, I guess, kind of what, how he described it, like a boutique car dealership, doesn't want to have a small amount of cars, but nicer quality. So there was very, you know, technical approvals, wasn't any site plans or anything like that. It was just make, you know, starting the process off. And so planning commission did approve, moving forward. There were several items that had to get referred to ZBA, so they'll be looking at those before ZBA, after ZBA does it, then site plans will continue forward, so.
Excellent.
Ultimately, that'll be heading to us at some point, but we, we aren't to that point yet. We're literally just at the start of this process.
Big steps, making sure everything's, we, it needs to be. Yeah, finally, Dan.
You will have, yeah, once, I don't know if they've submitted an application yet or not.
Yes, they have, for a variance, because the, the major thing that the city council needs to be aware of is that this is an application for conditional rezoning.
Sure.
From C3 to C2.
Okay.
And that requires the city council, and the planning commission would make a.
A recommendation.
A recommendation to that effect, and then we would have to amend the zoning map to that effect.
Does review C2 differ from C3 how?
You know, it's kind of technical as to what is a permitted use.
Yeah, permitted use.
There, and so an outdoor storage, which is what they're looking at, could be done there.
Because they have the cars on the lot.
Yes, a special use permit, and then of course, they need a variance for the lot width.
It's going to be a long process. This will not be short by any means, but.
But it's not, it's not before council now, we can be hinged it on ZBA permitting first. So we are, we're waiting on all that to happen before we come to you guys, to us.
All right. Did you have any meetings that you went to?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Moving along, we've got another opportunity for audience participation at this time. If anybody would like to come forward. All right, and we'll keep moving on. Council member comments, I kind of already said mine, but I'll go ahead and start here, Terry.
For Jubilee?
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Brandon?
We all gave a great last time you were there, but I got a good Jubilee.
Yep.
So, so my counsel will comment on it, so about Jubilee. I, it, it went really well this year. Everyone, we had an amazing committee this year with an amazing bunch of volunteers. Danette Gross took over as volunteer coordinator this year, and I cannot sing her praises enough. She got, she started with a spreadsheet in March, trying to line up people to, to work the, the food and beverage tent, which was awesome because this is, as all of you know, was our second year as the Jubilee, taking that over from the Lions, who had done it for 50 years. And last year, we were kind of flying by the seat of our pants, and Danette had came in and served food for us, and she goes, next year, it's not going to be like this. And it wasn't. She, she did it, she did a great job. And the people that came out, the people that signed up showed up, and they, they worked really hard for us, and it was awesome. At the last minute, we had, we worked for two years to get that, the National Guard help out to come in. And we found out on Wednesday that they were going to come in on Friday. So we had a lot of people, why didn't you advertise this?
Sure.
Well, the year prior, we had advertised it, we had it in our radio advertising, we had it everywhere. And then they called the week before and we had it canceled. And that, and we did not want to do that again this year. So we had, we had submitted for it, and they gave us preliminary approval in March, but they wouldn't give us final approval. And until they gave us final approval, we didn't, we didn't want to put it all out there. So that's why there was late notice for that, but a lot of people still made it out. People, people seemed to absolutely love that, but it, things went really well.
How did the kids' carnival go over in McCormick? Because that was a new thing this year, a little bit bigger.
So some people seemed to really like it.
Uh huh.
We are, we're, I, the Jubilee president, Mac Donnelly, was actually on the phone with two different carnivals today, trying to, trying to book a larger, better carnival for next year. Some people really liked it. We did have some questions about the organization that we had out there. So they will not be returning, but our goal is to have.
Better.
Have a bigger and better carnival. Unfortunately, the, the really nice carnival that's located in Dansville that does Dansville's festival every year in May is already booked for our dates for next year. But we've reached out to some other organizations. So the goal is to have, have a nice carnival next year, but it will not be the organization we had this year.
All right. Well, there's always opportunity for improvement, and, you know, the Dansville one, maybe you can book them two years in advance so that we can have them. But thank you so much for your efforts, and please, you know, echo our sentiments to that entire Jubilee committee. I know that you guys take a small break before you start planning for the next year, and it sounds like you guys are already hard at work, so.
I've had emails already, I was telling Brandon before the meeting, I had, the last day of Jubilee was the 26th, and I got an email on the 27th of someone wanting to plan an event for next year.
Sure.
And I just had to put the phone away, and I go.
Yep, yep, you just had to let go.
They emailed me today, like, did anybody get this email? I'm like, I will have to email them back in about two weeks.
Well, you'll have to let me, you'll have to tell the scheduler to get ahold of me because the class of 83 had people behind in the beverage serving, and so now I got to get my class of 85 classmates in here, so.
We've got room for him, we'll, we'll sign him.
All right. I just want to, again, say thank you to the Jubilee committee. It's one of the highlights of our year when we get to, to have our town on display. And I have heard nothing but high praise for every event that happened. You know, it's really an opportunity for people to come and see what Williamson is about. It's, it's, you know, in the summertime, we had excellent weather, which was, you know, we've not had that in the past for Jubilee. But, you know, continue moving forward and upward for that. We still have a lot of summer left with our Thursday night van show series. Farmer's Market on Sunday from 10 to 2 right there in McCormick Park. I know that National Night Out will be coming up in August, so I'll ask Chief to speak to that as we get closer when he is here for a council meeting. But I just want to tell everybody, you know, continue to enjoy summer and, you know, be safe out there. And before you know it, school buses will be rolling down the streets again, so. That's it for me. I will go ahead and call to adjourn at 7:45.